How are you doing? Talk about that sad step.
Short, short, short. Not that much, not that much, not that much.
Hey Mike, how are you doing? Good, good. I didn't work around. Well, you were in the Bahamas on our anniversary night. Couple weeks ago. Okay, I was in the Bahamas at the last. And I was in one of those. Yeah, we tried to go to the Bahamas on our anniversary. We liked it. On our anniversary, we liked to let the Bahamas in. Always follows during the February city council. Oh, wow. Because we got to go to the same.
Good evening. Glad you're here. It is six oh three. I will call us to order when you have a quorum. Our first item will be our invocation. It'll be given tonight by Gary Murph. He is a member and deacon at First Baptist Church here in Jacksonville, and he's the representative of the Giddians, who distribute Bibles worldwide. So if you'll stand for our invocation and then we'll do the pledges. Right there is perfect.
Our gracious Father, we're so grateful that we have the privilege of living in a country where we can assemble ourselves and be represented by a people that we've elected to serve and to assist in the administration of our governments. I thank you, Father, that we live in America and we're privileged to live in Jacksonville, Texas. Tonight, Father, I just pray that you would bless this meeting. I pray you'd grant your wisdom, your grace, to each of these council persons and that you would be with each person who presents tonight. We pray that we would all act in accordance with loving kindness and gentleness and grace. I pray you'd give this council wisdom as they govern our city. I pray for each person who will have a part tonight, that you would give them a peace and grace, that we would all realize how blessed we are to be free and to live in a place like Jacksonville. I thank you for our police officers and our firefighters, for all of our city workers who provide services to make this a very special place to live. So, Father, we just pray that you would be present tonight in great power and authority. I pray that you would anoint each of these council members with wisdom in the decisions that they make. We thank you again for the blessings that you so abundantly bestow into our lives. We pray for forgiveness where we have sinned against you. We ask all of this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for his sake. Amen.
Join me in the pledges? This was not scripted. Perfect, thank you. First of our emergency flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Of the Texas flag?
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
I'm older, that's why.
Our first item is a special presentation to be given, Business of the Month, presented by JEDCO President Shane Pace. Mr. Pace?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, so this month we are giving our award to Vine on Main. So we have Jennifer Dar, if you wouldn't mind joining us. For those of you who live here in Jacksonville, you know that Vine on Main is a very special place. It's probably the most premier boutique we have in town. People come from all around the region to shop there. And Jennifer's been doing a phenomenal job for, I was just talking to her a few minutes ago, almost four years in that location. She's increased her business. She's basically filled the space to its
Capacity.
Capacity, exactly. And she recently purchased a building directly next door, which was formerly Marisco Southern area. So she plans on expanding into that space. And so one thing we like to do at JEDCO is support our local businesses. And so she was awarded a downtown redevelopment grant to help her redevelop that building that's been sitting vacant for at least a year or longer now. So we just want to continue to support her and say thank you for all that she does to the community and just wish her continued success.
Thank you so much.
Did you have any cards tonight?
Thank you.
No, no, no.
Thank you. Our next item is citizens' participation. This is where we set aside some time to hear concerns of our citizens. Did we get, I don't think we got anybody?
No cards tonight.
No cards tonight? Okay, great. Our next item is our consent agenda. Items under our consent agenda require little or no deliberations. You can see there, it's just approving the minutes, the election, election workers and the street closure with the tomato fest. So I'll entertain a motion on our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McRae.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Our next item is any action out of executive session. We will reconvene in executive session after our regular meeting this evening, but I think James has one announcement.
Yeah, mayor, council, citizens. We do have one announcement. You probably saw on Personnel Matters tonight, we did discuss the position of Police Chief. And after nineteen years, Stephen Markowski has gone from a lifeguard to the chief of the Jacksonville Police Department. Our local media has a more serious press release, but that's true story. He started as a lifeguard in 'oh six and he's now the chief of the police department. Just definitely has doubled down on his investment into the department and into himself. And that's proven throughout the entire process. Reviewing you, really, really proud to make this announcement tonight, Stephen.
Thank you, Stephen. Appreciate it. Item number nine is a presentation of the twenty-three, twenty-four financial audit by Pethillo Brown &amp; Hill. So if you'd like to come talk to us a little bit, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for having me this evening to present the results of our annual audit. So every year, local governments are required to receive an audit, primarily for the sake of the financial statement users. This includes the community, bondholders, granting agencies, and it's required every single year. So a few months ago, we began the audit process with the finance team at the city. This involves us doing a variety of procedures, making sure that the balances in the annual comprehensive financial report in front of you are accurate. That not to the dollar, but we're reasonably sure that they can be relied on by these parties. So I'll go ahead and cut to the most important part. And that's on page one. Once again, the city has received an unmodified opinion. There are three opinions that we can offer. Unmodified is the best. That's the same thing as clean opinion. It means that the books that we audited do follow generally accepted accounting principles and can be relied on. In addition to the financial statement audit, which received a clean opinion, we also looked at internal control over financial reporting, specifically in the finance department. Do they have internal controls in place that lead to accurate reporting? And that's the case as well. And the other opinion that we looked at was federal spending. As y'all know, the ARPA spending is kind of coming to a close and we tested it one more time to make sure that y'all are compliant with the U.S. Treasury's rules related to that spending and reporting. And happy to say total compliance with the federal reporting and no issues there. And happy to say we had no disagreements with management, no significant audit entries that we passed on. Clean set of books, kind of to summarize. Clean set of books. And the finance team were very helpful in getting us everything we needed. And they can attest that that was a lot of stuff. But they made it very easy on us. Some very quick financial highlights. The chief operating fund of the city, we can find on page fourteen, the general fund. Taking a look at the reserves in general fund. So in terms of unrestricted money, specifically in the general fund, about 4.7 million as of September 30th, 2024. That is about a hair over thirty-two percent of a year's worth of spending in the general fund, which exceeds the required policy of twenty percent of the city, but not too high. Comfortable, middle of ground there. Another very important fund, the utility fund, came in in a good financial position as well. An operating income during the year of almost 2.3 million, and that's just for the utility activities. And that has about forty-eight percent of a year's worth of spending as reserves. And the policy for that fund is twenty-five percent, a little higher than general fund, understandably, but y'all came in over that, which is great. That sure can finance future projects and improvements. And the last piece I want to mention, kind of just going back to general fund, another, some more good news, is that the general fund came in under budget, which is great. Y'all did not exceed the appropriated expenditures during the year. Y'all came in under. And the general fund actually had a little bit of net income a year in, which is actually becoming less common these days. This past year, we've seen less of it. So the fact that y'all added fund balance to both the general fund and utility fund is great. And to close, I alluded to this when we spoke days ago. On page eighty-one, I think it's a great, helpful kind of picture of the city that anyone can refer to, to kind of put things into perspective from a, you know, ten-year point of view. So we're looking at, what are the trends for the cities? What's the city's financial stability? I mean, every single year for the past ten years, revenues have gone up steadily over that time. And of course, expenditures go up when you have more revenue. But steady amount of spending, steady fund balance. The amount of debt service y'all spend per year and the bonds actually decreased this year, which is good. Doing more with less debt. So broadly speaking, I think the, just from my limited perspective, of course, the city's in a good financial position, has been, and it has a clean set of books to offer and good internal controls as well. So that's, I guess, the audit results in summary. And I also don't want to forget to mention, this ACFR here, we assisted in preparing it. At the end of the day, the management, management's numbers and the city's numbers, but every year has received the GFOA award in reporting excellence. So I'd like to, I guess, close with that and open up to any questions y'all have on the audit, what we did, what the audit means or any of our results or financial information.
Hold up. Some of the audits that you do for cities our size, does a lot of them participate in the GIO?
Yeah, GFOA, I would say about half.
Okay.
GFOA requires that, there's lots more schedules we have to add in here, a significant amount, and they have to be submitted by March 31st. So there's a quick turnaround from year in for finance team to close the books, for us to audit it, prepare all the supplementary schedules. It's a big ask, I can tell you. When I audit a city that does not apply to this award, it goes by a little quicker.
Right.
There's not a lot of schedules. But as you saw, including the schedule I alluded to at the end, all the supplementary information is helpful, but it takes a lot to provide it. So I want to especially thank Roxanna and her team in getting all that information to us in a timely manner, in an accurate manner. Makes a world of difference. So I think the city has received that award you referred to for many years now.
Yeah.
I can't think of a year that they haven't. So thanks for her help. It's a big good to get that award for you.
Great.
Any other questions that y'all might have this evening?
Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you very much for having me. See you for the next year.
All right. So item being that is consider possible action regarding the findings of the twenty-three, twenty-four audit. So I will entertain a motion. Accept their findings.
I'll make a motion that we accept the audit findings from the twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four audit.
Great. We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
I'll second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McRae. Any other questions you might have? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number ten is to discuss and consider possible action of resolution authorizing the submission of a Texas Community Development Block Grant Program application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the downtown revitalization program.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, this is kind of a continuation, or the proposed continuation, rather, of what we saw in the 100 block of Commerce Street in about 2018, when we got underway with the sidewalk reconstruction project, probably actually a little closer to 2019 on the construction timeline there. The amount, the maximum award has actually been doubled from 500,000 to a million. In 2018, we were awarded with a $500,000 grant, which at the time required a $75,000 match. Through TDA and the CDBG program, the max award has been raised to a million and the match that's required has actually been reduced to as low as a 2% or $20,000 match to receive the maximum or a $50,000 match at 5% of $1 million to require the maximum award of points as the various applications are ranked by the scoring panel. At the February 12th meeting this year, the city, excuse me, the JEDCO board unanimously approved Shane working with the city to apply for this grant. They would actually be the entity offering up the $50,000 match to assume the maximum award of points for that individual category. Again, this is just really approval of filing the preliminary application. There's then a scoring protocol that goes in place and then there would be an award downstream. We will lose a few points due to the recency of the 2018 or thereabouts award, but our consultants, both on the engineering side and the grant side, do believe that by leveraging the $50,000 match, we may be able to overcome any points that we lose out on due to the recency of the 2018 award. And you see there, it's a little bit difficult to see on that slide, I apologize. But the areas highlighted in red, JEDCO has been working with Schaumburg &amp; Polk engineers to receive plans, to design, develop, and then receive the plans on the continuation of exactly what you see in that 100 block with the stamped pavers, the signature intersection. There would be bump outs as planned at Ragsdale at Commerce, but that would be the only other intersection to my knowledge with that feature. But the lighting package, the irrigation package, tree wells and so forth. It's, again, a little difficult to see with the brilliant color there in Hazel Tilton Park, but there is a continuation of the project south of 79, just in that block there to the east of Hazel Tilton Park and the west of City Hall. Again, even if JEDCO and the city were to receive this award, there's no telling if we could do that large, you know, all of the project at once, but JEDCO has been working toward the design and then we'll work through the phasing based on availability of funds and grant awards.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion on the resolution authorizing the submission of this grant.
Mayor, I make a motion that we make a motion authorizing the submission of the TDVG or the Texas Community Development Block Grant application.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilwoman Latitia Horace.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallit. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number eleven, to discuss and consider possible action of resolution suspending the effective date proposed by Centerpoint Energy Resources Corporation by forty-five days.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, I didn't create a slide and I do apologize. We did not discuss this at the Thursday workshop, but it's very standard. We generally do this every year under the advisement of an attorney firm that works on behalf of many different cities. This is a standard process. Oftentimes, you'll see it on the agenda as the GRIP rate, which I believe stands for the Gas Reliability Infrastructure Program. It's essentially a rate that the utility, the gas utility gets to bake into their base rates that gets passed along to customers for upgrades and enhancements to safety of the gas transmission system. This effectively just positions us as opposing that rate increase and delaying it for the forty-five days. Generally, it's going to make its way into the bills at some point, but this offers a little bit of relief.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion on that resolution.
I'll make a motion that we enact a resolution suspending the effective date proposed by Centerpoint Energy Resources by forty-five days.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McRae. Any discussion? Like James said, this is an exercise we do, I think, every year. So we will continue to do it. If no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number twelve, discuss and consider possible action in ordinance adopting right-of-way management regulations.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, we had a really great and exhaustive review of this with Randall's help and Brett's help on Thursday, so I'll keep it pretty tight tonight, but we are happy to answer any questions. Essentially, a lot of the utilities that operate throughout the state have rights to operate within the city's right-of-way. And what this does is establish a very, very defined and systematic approach to who's working on our right-of-ways, when they're working there, and then if there are downstream damages incurred, that we're able to understand who to contact and hold them accountable for damages to potentially city infrastructure. We'll look at that here in a second. But it's a long caption to the ordinance there, but I've highlighted really everything that encapsulates what we discussed on Thursday. And that's that this would provide city procedures and registration, for registration and permits prior to construction within the right-of-way, creating construction and maintenance standards requiring removal of infrastructure upon abandonment and requiring compliance with the city design manual and applicable codes for the installation of network nodes and node support poles. Again, we talked about the network nodes and node support poles not being quite as prevalent in communities like Jacksonville yet, but they're probably coming as there's more demand on broadband and Wi-Fi and those resources. This, the pictures on this slide are telling. These are from Jacksonville. And this is exactly what we're trying to ensure is no longer a problem. Or if it is, conflicts are inevitable at some point, regardless of planning, that we know who to hold accountable. You see there on the upper right-hand side of the screen, a sewer line that's been bored through with some fiber. Again, these generally take a long time to rear their ugly heads. Sewer is a gravity-based system, so there's not a lot of pressure. So when somebody boards through it, generally it can take weeks, months, maybe even years for the damage to appear in the form of a sinkhole or a backup at a business or something along those lines. And then on the left there, you see, I think it was a, is it a 24-inch main, Randall? That was, you know, I think that was within probably my first six months of being the city manager here was in the area Cherry Street. That was the only boil water notice we've had in the last couple of years. But that ended up canceling surgeries at hospitals and things like that. Anytime water quality becomes of concern, you're going to see a slowdown in the economy. So we want to do everything we can to protect the infrastructure like that. But a hole was bored straight through that line and you see one of our workers down there that evening working to address the issue, but it took some time. So again, it's a permitting process and just working to ensure that we know who's the prime contractor, who are their subs, how to get in contact with them at the time of construction or even post-construction if there are concerns. These right-of-ways are getting taxed and taxed and burdened with more and more infrastructure. And, you know, we're having to replace our infrastructure too, so as there's more fiber in the ground, we're at greater risk of hitting it when we're doing our own projects. And so it's only fair to hold these companies accountable as well.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion on that ordinance.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. We pass an ordinance adopting a right-of-way management program.
We have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Latitia Horace. Any discussion?
Just very ecstatic about this ordinance, ready to get it enacted and get it in place.
And I know it talked about the nodes on the first, but I mean, that would apply to anybody. Encore.
The nodes are really more wireless technology, extension of broadband facilities.
Right, right.
And generally, they're on above-ground infrastructure, water towers, the Star Tower in Hazel Tilton Park, lamp posts, light posts, things of that nature. And they're sometimes obtrusive and not necessarily aesthetically pleasing.
Right, yeah.
And Brett was just telling me that we can actually regulate those in residential areas.
And we do in this ordinance.
Passing this ordinance, we do.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number thirteen is to discuss and consider with possible action awarding a contract for the mowing of the cemetery.
Yes, thank you. Let me get to that slide. Yeah, we've been bidding this out the past couple of years. Mayor and council was advertised two times this February. We had the opening March 5th. It is for a contract term, backdating itself just slightly to February through November 31st of this year. It's twenty-two cycles at each of the two cemeteries, City Cemetery and Rest Haven. You see their sizes there, over 50 acres combined or, or thereabouts, and almost, you know, 13,000 different monuments and plots to work around and maintain. We received four proposals ranging from 81,000 to 95,000, and we're recommending award to Gee's Lawn Service, who was the sub to the previous prime contractor for the amount of 81,304.21, uh, which came in a little bit below budget, so we're happy to recommend award this evening. We do have familiarity with this contractor.
Very good. So I'll entertain a motion on that one for contract.
Mayor, I make a motion that we award the contract for the mowing of the cemeteries.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallit.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Latitia Horace. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 14 is to discuss and consider possible action in amendment to Article 7 of the Rules and Regulations Governing Lake Jacksonville, adding a section clarifying the prohibition of short-term rentals on city-owned lease lots.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Just want to kick things off by saying this is not a paradigm shift. This is just further clarifying and giving the city ability to enforce how we've always operated at Lake Jacksonville via the Lake Jacksonville Rules and Regulations on the city-owned lease lots. So in Texas, a short-term rental is generally defined as a rental of a residence or dwelling or accessory unit for less than 30 consecutive days. Beyond that, it wouldn't fall within this definition. That would be more of a lease, considered a long-term lease. Uh, this definition aligns with vacation rental terminology used in other states and is generally consistent across Texas cities. So we'll take a look at how we've previously prohibited, if you will, and conveyed that to Lake Lot Lesses, um, their inability, if you will, to operate Airbnbs. And the point of that graphic there was, it does seem apparent that there are some people operating potentially in violation of their lease and promoting, um, the, the rental, short-term rental of their properties on city-owned lease lots. Previously, anytime somebody inquired about this, we referred them to Section 8, which under Article 7 of the Lake Rules and regs, which is the commercial enterprise on a residential lot, there's been some, uh, there's been some case law throughout the state that's essentially determined that short-term rentals are not a commercial enterprise. And so while, again, because this, these lots are leased from the city, we can generally point people toward that, we want to be very clear. We don't want somebody to make a purchase decision based on a pro forma of renting out or leasing short-term property. And so we're proposing to add, and this was unanimously recommended for approval by the Lake Advisory Board at their January 31st, 2025 meeting, Section 11 would be added in addition to, um, Section 8 remaining, and it would just simply state that short-term rentals are prohibited on city-owned lease lots. Short-term rentals are defined as the rental advertisement for rent or any offer for rent, rental of any dwelling or any portion thereof for a period of less than 30 consecutive days. Again, just clarifying language, if this is approved tonight, we'll take some action to notify all Lake Lot Lesses, but, um, definitely the ones that appear to be, um, promoting the rental of their property.
Okay. I'll, I will entertain a motion on the amendment on the Lake Lot.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by Councilman, uh, Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tim McGray. Any discussion?
And all of this has been vetted through the Lake Jacksonville Association.
The Advisory Board.
Okay.
Yeah, the Advisory Board. After January 31st meeting, we discussed either rewording Section 8 or just adding a section. There are some, there is some coverage that Section 8 probably gives related to some other forms of commercial enterprise, so, you know, to run, we didn't want to run the risk of messing that up, so we just figured, let's just cut straight to the point and be very clear in, by adding Section 11.
My belief has always been let the Lake people advise us on what they want to see out there and perfect.
Sure.
Now, Councilman Goen, you said you just make a motion to approve.
I'm making a motion to approve the, uh, clarify the prohibition on short-term rentals on city-owned lease lots.
Okay, that's great. That's what I thought you said. And we did get a second, so any other discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Open forum for mayor and council.
Oh, we'll come back.
I do just want to announce, the Fred Douglas Community Development Corporation is having their community service awards banquet this Saturday, um, March 15th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at Kingdom Christian Center. It is open to the public. Tickets are $50 per person. They do have to be purchased in advance, um, so anyone is welcome to come out. We appreciate you all's support.
Is that the same thing we went to one time at the Heights Church?
Yes, at Seminary Heights?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Anybody else? All right. City managers report.
Couple of updates. The demolition, I think this was mentioned in city manager report, uh, the last meeting, but constructor, excuse me, demolition had not commenced, but Gardendale and its demolition is currently underway. This is a property on Highway 79. Again, want to thank Jedco for partnering with the city and all the recent demolition efforts, which has really been a focus and will continue to be a focus as we can find funds. Uh, this is a property that was definitely harboring activity that none of us would want, uh, in our community or in our backyard and was, um, detracting from patrol operations and requiring time as it should not be, and so we're really pleased to see this coming down, anticipate its completion within the next couple of weeks. Uh, the Boating Access Grant Project is, um, well underway. Of course, we've had our share of, um, below freezing temperatures and rainfall in the last couple of months, but, uh, does maintain generally, I think, on schedule. The boat ramp itself, the, the double concrete launches that go down into the water, they're actually poured, they're underwater there in that picture, and we're trying to get, and the contractor's working diligently to get the soil there for the drive approach up to the ramp itself, um, ready to, ready to take, uh, new concrete. You see here the foundation and the rough-in, the plumbing rough-in for the new, um, actually the form boards, I guess, or to say for the new restroom facility and the rough-in plumbing. So things are going well out there and we're hopeful that we'll finish in early summer 2025. And then just this week, actually over the weekend, we saw the commencement of the splash pad. I saw it on the front page of the most recent progress article, uh, the splash pad at Lincoln Park, so this should be open, um, gen- generally, um, right along the time that Nichols, uh, opens it in, uh, May, the May Memorial Day timeline, and you actually see some of the equipment there that's already been staged and placed, and the concrete will be poured soon. Um, I've been making my rounds with different civic organizations throughout town, happy to visit with any more upon request, to talk about the special election that the city called, at the city council called at the January 11th city council meeting. Election Day will be Saturday, May 3rd. There are some early voting dates, which is great. Voting will take place at the library. The best way for you to learn, uh, more about this and to get all the information hopefully is there are some pamphlets on the back table that should do a pretty comprehensive job at answering questions, or go to jacksonvilletx.org, look for the special election banner at the top, click on that. I think you'll have to click one additional link, and then you'll get to kind of an FAQ with some different, um, links. The sample ballot has now been posted on there, both in English and Spanish, so voters can see exactly, um, the wording on the ballot, and we are working with Cherokee County Elections Office, um, to also link to the registered voter list as soon as that's released. That's out of our control, but I believe per state law, it has to be public, uh, 30 days prior to the election. Again, you really need to go to that website, but the, the synopsis here is that the city is looking to establish, asking voters to establish a municipal development district in its ETJ, which extends from the city limits one mile outside of the city. It's the purple buffered area there in the exhibit, and we're asking voters to consider a half-cent sales tax or a half-percent sales tax increase, taking that rate from its existing six and three-quarters to seven and a quarter. So if you were to purchase a hundred-dollar item, you'd pay an additional 50 cents of tax on that if this were to be successful. The revenues generated from that have to be spent back in the purple buffer area, and the main caveat to all of this is only people who live in the purple buffer area of the ETJ can vote in the election. So Jacksonville citizens, although the council called the election, cannot vote in the election. It's for those individuals who are registered voters who live in the ETJ, and only those individuals. So again, the website's a great opportunity, and I'm happy to come speak to civic groups or walk you through any type of questions you may have. It can be a little confusing, but, um, the easiest way to think of it is it operates very, very similar to Jedco. Jedco cannot operate and collect tax from the ETJ, so this complements Jedco. It does not impact, it does not deter from Jedco or anybody else having access to this sales tax revenue. It doesn't take revenue from anybody and give it to somebody else. It's raising the rate for the purposes of establishing the MDD. Lastly, tomorrow, there's a coffee with a cop at Chick-fil-A from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM. It would be a wonderful time for the community to come out and get to see Chief Markaski. And I failed to mention, uh, in my earlier comments about that announcement, that, uh, next Thursday, March 20th, from 4:00 to 6:00, we'll have a public pinning and reception-type ceremony at the Public Safety Complex 911 South Bolton. So we'll get that type of information out on Facebook here, and just with a little over a week, uh, we have to prepare for that. That's it.
That's it. So at 6:37, we will, uh, go into closed executive session, City Hall Conference Room for open meetings, public act for government code, section 551.071, consult with our city attorney, 551.072, real property, and 551.074, personnel matters, the police chief, and the city manager's contract with section 6, vehicle, cellular telephone, and laptop. And then we will reconvene with any action afterwards. Thank you for coming.